Five board members. And we're going to move the election of officers to the back of the meeting. And we like to move into our approval of minutes from the previous month. Do we have any minutes that we need to approve for? I've no minutes to approve.
We'll bring you the minutes next month.
Okay. We like to move into our next order of business. We're going to move around some things. First thing we'd like to look at is our consideration and possible action of variance 22 dash 07, front setback variance for accessory structures in single-family residential zoning district. And this is a request by Roderick Dietrich, applicant and owner, for approval of variance as transmitted by the Unified Development Code Ordinance Number 2000 dash T to allow a reduction of the 100 foot setback for a proposed accessory structure on a lot over one acre in a single-family residential. Legal description, Lot 7 and Block 7, with a general location of 2101 West Mary's Creek and West Mary Creek Lane, Pearland, Texas. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. Before we get into the staff report, I'd like to go through the format of the meeting, just to, since we do have a nice crowd tonight. For each of the items, tonight we'll have a call to order followed by a staff report, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to present. Afterwards, we'll have public comment and support or opposition too. At that time, please state your name and address for the record at the microphone. Be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. And if you are representing a group of people, you will get five minutes. And then afterwards, board and staff will have their discussion. The board will vote to approve as presented, approve with conditions, deny the request, or table the item. We have two items on the agenda tonight. What being, one being 6425 Broadway Street for a special exception for alternative fencing between a non-residential and adjacent residential use. And then 2101 West Mary's Creek Lane for a front setback variance for accessory structure in the R1 District. Since we are moving the variance number two up in the agenda, I will pass it over to Patrick to begin the staff report.
Thank you, Martin. And I'll wait till that comes up. So the request, as mentioned, is for a variance to allow a reduction of the 100-foot setback to 50 feet for a proposed accessory structure on a lot over one acre in the R1 District. Just a little history on this property to start. Originally, back in the June ZBA, this request was brought, and it was the same variance to allow a reduction from 100 feet to 50 feet. At that meeting, the board decided in the end to postpone that determination or the vote on it in order to receive a little more information and specifically to get a topographic survey, which would truly show where the floodplain and the floodway clearly were delineated. GIS maps were only so good, and they don't provide an exact, and sometimes the computer system can kind of fluctuate. So kind of getting that survey will kind of be more definitive, and that's what the applicant has submitted, resubmitted, and now we are coming back to the board with this request. So just to mention, the general location is 2101 West Mary's Creek Lane, and the zoning is Single Family Residential 1 District. You go to the next slide. Kind of to date, this dates back also to when the original request was brought. To date, there have been three written comments in support, 33 against. There's been two phone calls against, one asking for more information. And then at that previous meeting in June, there was one comment that was in support, and then three comments that were against. Some of the concerns that have just been mentioned throughout all these comments is the impact the building could have on traffic and the view it could have from the intersection. People have also mentioned the size of the building, as well as the impact the building may have on the character of the neighborhood. So generally, this is kind of a fresh relsa. The property is Zoned R1, and the surrounding properties all around it are Single Family Residential 1 as well. And then looking at the future land use, it's kind of similar. It's low-density residential is the property, and then all the surrounding properties are also a low-density residential future land use. Kind of just going over a further back history, the property was platted in 1959 as part of Shady Crest Neighborhood, and then it was annexed into the city in 1960. The original residence was first built in 1976. That previous dwelling was demolished, and a new residence was built on the property in 2009. Just kind of going over the surrounding uses, as mentioned, it's mostly residential. The property, however, to the northwest, neighboring property, it's undeveloped, but it's in city Pearland-owned property, all is pretty heavily within the floodway. And then kind of looking at the property, we get a view of the residence from West Mary's Creek Lane. And then also, we get a view of kind of generally where that structure could potentially be placed. And we get a view from Long Hareage Drive of the property. We get more of a view of the back of the property as well. It's kind of a little more difficult to see, but behind that railing is the lift station that is on the side of the property. And we get a view from the back of the property. This would be if you were literally in Mary's Creek, looking up towards the back of the And then kind of looking at the surrounding properties, we get that property to the northwest, which is undeveloped, it's vacant currently, there's nothing there. And then property to the northeast is a residence across Mary's Creek. And then looking at the properties to the southeast and south, we also get a view of, as mentioned, the surrounding uses of residences. And then last, or lastly, we also get a view of some more residences that are across West Mary's Creek Lane. And so this is the updated proposed site plan, updated. It's just a, it's a newer one. It kind of gives more information on the setbacks, and we'll go a little deeper into it. But generally, you can see the white box outlined that is on kind of your right, right, right side of the residence. That's the proposed structure. Next to it, you see a similar, not similar shape, but polygon shape that's the lift station along Long Hareage. And then you can kind of see a line that kind of goes diagonal on the property, that kind of cuts the property diagonally. That's the floodline, and we'll kind of go a little further into that a little later. But first, let's kind of zoom into the property. You can see the accessory structure that's proposed as a 1,500-square-foot accessory structure. It's currently the requesting for 50-foot setback. The 50-foot is as shown, and then it's proposed generally to be 25 feet off of the residence side, and then 24 feet off from the side property line. And kind of getting a rendering of the building, this would be generally what the applicant is going for. Again, this request is for specifically the setback, but this is what they are generally thinking, and this is what it would look like if it were put at 50, the 50-foot setback line. And this is just kind of a section of the property, kind of seeing the residence and accessory structure, as well as how the ground kind of looks around the property. And here's the floodplain and floodway, kind of, this is the topographic survey that the board had asked for, and we're going to go a little closer in, but you kind of, it's, there's a lot of colors on the screen, but there is a kind of like pinkish line that runs diagonally through, similar to the previous one, that is the floodline. If we go to the next slide, this kind of shows, there's that line showing, here's the floodway, and the floodway is mostly on, I should say, like the northern, northwestern portion of the property. And the one in your floodplain is more on the south-southeast portion along Long Hareage and West Mary's Creek. So kind of taking those two aspects and basically overlaying them to see how the, how where the floodplain and the floodway sit compared to where a 50-foot setback would be, as well as 100-foot setback would be. We first kind of get, the floodline is that light blue line, and the floodway would be the northwest portion, and the 100-year floodplain would be the southeast. And then we get the red dash line, which would be the 100-foot setback. And you can kind of see, you can see the proposed accessory structure. And then just up from that would be, the yellow would be where the 100-foot setback would require the structure to be. And you can kind of see it's within, it's within, not predominantly, entirely within the 100-year floodplain. And so staff kind of had some findings based on the information received. If you go to the next slide, Mohammed. So first off, the 100-foot setback can be met without encroaching on the floodway, as seen by the submission, by the distance that it would be back from the property line. And the structure, structures can be built within the 100-year floodplain. They may have additional requirements, but they can be built. And another staff finding was looking at the survey and looking at the elevation of the property, the topographic survey shows that the property is predominantly flat with no drastic changes in the elevation. Therefore, there's no significant difference in terms of construction requirements if you were to go with 50 or 100-foot setback from the property line. And the applicant has submitted documents detailing a difference in cost for the fill dirt, but that cost is not a reason specifically to approve the variance. And some of the just additional findings that staff had, the trees were mentioned as one of the hardships. But it was not submitted, or the submitted survey doesn't show the location or species of those trees, the exact location. And then also, there was some concerns over the fumes that may have been coming out. Currently, to date, the public works has not received any complaints of smell from the lift station along Long Hareage Drive since the reconstruction of the facility in July 2020. I'll pass it over to Martin to complete the criteria for approval.
Thank you, Patrick. So this is the criteria for approval of variance. If you remember, variances require that there are yes criteria, or that it meets the criteria out of all of the questions within the Unified Development Code. So this, this chart pulls directly from the Development Code. And as you can see, we've reevaluated the criteria based on the submittal, based on the submitted plans. This, the proposal does not meet six out of the eight criteria. Mohammed, if you'll go to the next. The 100-foot setback can be met by the accessory structure without encroaching into the floodway. And the location on the property within the 100-year floodplain is not unique to the property, as the surrounding properties also lie along the creek and have similarly affected based on topography of the land. With that said, if approved, the applicant will be required to meet all other development regulations within the R1 Single Family Residential zoning district and meet building, fire safety, and engineering requirements for development. Staff's recommendation is not to recommend approval of the requested variance for the reduction of 50% of the 100-foot required setback for an accessory structure. And should the board choose to grant the variance, the board needs to consider the extent of the reduction while taking into consideration how the surrounding properties will be impacted, and if any conditions should be required to mitigate views of the structure.
We'd like to move into applicant presentation. No applicant?
You start?
Yes, sir.
As you can see from the drawings, this is not a Watson-Hut-type building. It's a metallic building. And yes, it is tall, because I want to put my motorhome in it. People that stopped and looked at my variance billboards, after you explained to them my concerns about putting this back that far, even from that drawing up there, I still have to slope that building around the edge, and it's going to get in the floodway. Haven't really, they said no concerns. Now, I've had just two or three people stop, you know? I haven't had anybody come knock on my door and ask about what this variance is about. I had to remove some trees, and I removed those trees because one of them was going, hit my house if a storm came through, and the other two were dead. There's no traffic issue with the building at 50 feet versus 70 feet versus 100 feet, because the city engineering design and criteria manual, Public Right-of-Way of Visibility Recommendation 6.6.1, show there's no interference from that code. You know, the last time we were here, we discussed 70 feet. At 70 feet, I can get my sloping done around that building for entry, front and back, without getting in the floodway. Yes, the sewer, I haven't called the city about the sewer vent, but if we put this back at 70, they're going to get a phone call weekly, because every time that thing, the level comes up, there's fumes that come out that vent. And last but not least, the city discussed 70 feet at the last meeting. I would be all right with that. Any questions?
No, sir, not at this time, but thank you so much. We'd like to move into persons wishing to speak for or against. I have a list of persons, so I'm just going to call your name. And as mentioned before, you have exactly three minutes. And if you finish earlier, that's great. We can move the time to someone else, but we want to not move the time, but move along. So I'm just going to call out the name and issues of time, okay? We have Brandy Johansson. And when we get to the podium, would you please state your name and address for us, please?
My name is Brandy Johansson. I live at 2101 Sprite Lane in Pearland. It's behind the creek in Shady Crest. Just want to make a few brief comments about the variance request. My family's been in that neighborhood since 1969. I owned a property there, and I grew up there, was raised there, left for a while, and I've recently come back. I've run those roads, literally. I've driven those roads for over 40 years, and I can tell you that already, the residents of this neighborhood know that as soon as you cross the creek, you have to hit your brakes and slow down and pay close attention, because there are issues with, and the pedestrian and cyclist traffic has increased greatly over the years, because it's a beautiful neighborhood with large, open yards, and people from the neighborhoods, Park View and other areas in front, come back there just to exercise and be with their families and enjoy the neighborhood. So as residents, we know that as we cross that creek, we have to slow down, because our views, our sightlines are already a little disturbed with all the trees and other things that are in the area. So building a structure of that size and that forward in the yard is going to cause a significant safety issue. And it may not show when you get your tape measures out and you're talking about traffic, but I can assure you, again, from running those roads, literally, for 40 years, and especially with the increased pedestrian and cyclist traffic of this time, it is absolutely a safety issue. We have to stop and pull over all the time, because you've got people coming in, and I don't have the diagram right in front of me, but right where his property sits, you've got people coming across the street, across the bridge and through Long Hareage, and then right on Mary's Creek at that intersection. That's the most traveled intersection of that back part of our neighborhood. And again, that's where all, everybody from the front neighborhoods are coming across the creek to do their exercising, their walking, walking with families, strollers, wagons, and that's where the cyclists have started. Our numbers for cyclists have increased as well, because it's so nice back there, and you don't have as much traffic to have to avoid when you're on a cycle, not on a bike. So I'd just like for you to take that into consideration. I'm absolutely opposed, and it's absolutely nothing against Mr. Dietrich and his wife. We love everyone in our neighborhood, but the structure being put there, that is absolutely not going to be safe for the neighborhood, and I've got serious concerns about that. It also just brings down, again, we have open yards, that's what we're known for. Everybody goes back there because it's peaceful. It's one of the last neighborhoods in Pearland that is truly large trees, beautiful, wide-open spaces. And so to put a structure like that right as you're coming over to the back part of our neighborhood would be detrimental for our enjoyment and all the other neighborhoods that are coming back there to enjoy the property. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to bring up Mia Johansson? And would Tamzi Mims be, she will be, he or she will be next, okay?
Can I start?
Please go ahead and start. State your name and address.
My name is Mia Johansson, and I live at 2101 Sprite Lane, and I'm just here to say that I oppose this variance. And that's it.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board. My name is Tamzi Lee Mims. I live at 3906 Shady Crest, right behind the creek. I was 13 when my parents bought that house. I am 68 now, so you can see I've been there for a long time. I oppose this variance due to the visual, there could be a blind right there at Long Hareage. There's a lot of bikers. There are kids fishing sometimes on the bridge. There are people walking, some mothers with their carriages, and with that, that site, the lift, no, the, what's the box there? Yeah, the lift station there. And if we had a building that close, we would be blinded in vision. Plus, there's several times where men come out in their trucks, and they're working on that box, so that's an added blind spot. So in regards to people at that corner, you can't see across the bridge, and I think it presents a very big hazard if it's put too close to the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Deborah Fewachs. Is that correct?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name's Deborah Fewachs. I actually live at 3520 West Circle Drive. I have been a previous homeowner there in Shady Crest of several houses. Anyway, I love the subdivision. I am probably a 20-plus-year-old realtor, and people always want Shady Crest. We bring them there anytime there's a house available. And like the other ones are saying, you have the lift station there, and it's enough of a blocking view there to, that you have to be extra cautious, even though you come there to the stop, you know, you're going to, you're going to be cautious because of that. Plus, the building itself, I don't oppose any building being built, as long as it's built in the proper position, proper location on the property. And I feel like this one is going to be another hindrance to our sight as we, you know, enter and come in and out of Long Hareage and Mary's Creek Drive itself. I do oppose the location of it, not the structure, but the location of it. So if you could help us with that in any way, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Cortland. And after Patty is U. Johnson? U. L. M. U. I. M.? Oh, Jim, I'm sorry, Jim Johnson. He'll be next after Patty. Go ahead, Ms. Cortland.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. I live at 2101 East Mary's Creek. And actually, I can, looking at the map, if you followed that blue line, you'd run straight into my house. So I'm just catty-corner on the creek. And I hope to describe the culture of our neighborhood in order to help you decide to uphold the ordinances we rely upon. Shady Crest is a unique neighborhood. Over the years, those of us who have chosen to live here may, maybe even unconsciously, have created a culture that is open, creative, connected, original, and comfortable. When our family moved here in 1969, you could see the cars on 518, if there were any cars. Houses have been built and trees planted, but there is still a sense of openness. When I walk around the block, I can see across several yards. In most subdivisions today, the emphasis is, the emphasis is on division. Lots are often smaller, houses are bigger and taller, and backyards are hidden by board fences. We who have chosen to live here have chosen openness rather than division. In Shady Crest, each home is unique. There's no master planner or master builder. It's interesting to see what our neighbors plant and build. There is a culture of creativity and ingenuity. The changes that we make to our part of the neighborhood are interesting to see and part of who we are as neighbors. So I live on a corner, so I have two sides of my yard open to view from the roads. We built our outbuildings in the back corner in the hope of living up to the responsibility to honor the culture of the neighborhood by maintaining openness. I ask the variance board to continue the rules we have agreed upon when we chose Shady Crest for our home. Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Jim Johnson, we will have Rosa Johnson.
Yeah, I'm Jim Johnson, live at 2004 West Mary's Creek for 49 years, and I object to the variance. I believe it's out of character in the neighborhood, and many of the homes in our neighborhood have shop and garage buildings on their property that are more discreet and less of a, that are more in character with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. After Rosa, we will have Fred Erhart.
Hello, I'm Rosa Johnson. I live in 2004 West Mary's Creek, and I object to the building. Thank you.
Thank you. After Fred, we will have Sylvia Erhart.
My name is Fred Erhart. I live at 3903 Shady Crest, and I was here to address the number three regarding the variance request being necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. I think the staff during the last meeting actually recommended that this variance does not meet the criteria. As it presently stands, Mr. Dietrich is able to enjoy the full preservation and enjoyment of his property without the need for this unnecessary variance. Therefore, a denial of this request does not place any burden or additional hardships upon him. I'd like to reiterate a lot of what has already been said here about the Shady Crest community and our consideration for the building being built, the driveway that will extend closer to the property line or the street line, and then what other ancillary pieces of vehicles, trailers, whatever, that'll be on, on the, on the driveway. All those will present a sightline hazard for the community. Shady Crest does not have any sidewalks, so everybody that exercises in the neighborhood is forced to use the streets. And so the heights of the building, the closer that it is to the street, all that is going to contribute to a, to a real safety hazard. I'd just, maybe just say one more thing about Mr. Dietrich's request. It's for 50 feet. It's not for 10 feet. It's not for 20 feet. It's not for 30 feet. It's not for 40 feet. 50 feet. That's a 50% variance to a standard 100-foot setback. I have to consider that to be a very egregious request, and if it was granted, I think it would be a real detriment to the, to the community, and I think it might open the door for other requests of a similar nature. All of the structures that are built in Shady Crest comply with the ordinances. That's what's made Shady Crest the community that it is. And like everybody has saying, it's a very desirable, sought-after community, and we would be very- And we would very much like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. After Sylvia Airhart, we will have Leza Brownstein sign.
I'm Sylvia Airhart and I live at 3, 3903 Shady Crest. And prior to that, I lived at 3902 Shady Crest for 35 years. Um, I'm here specifically to oppose the variance and I am wanting to address, uh, criteria number six. Um, and I first wanted to show a short video from the last meeting um, in which Mr. Dietrich explains, um, that this, um, is really of his own making. Can you run the sound there? There we go. Can we get the sound on the video? I'm sorry.
Downsize my building some? Yeah, I could do that. My motorhome is 33 feet long.
Uh, Mr. Dietrich, do you mind a, giving a more detail of why you set at the 30 by 50? Would you mind explaining that a little bit in detail for us, please, sir?
If you're asking me, can I put, uh, downsize my building some? Yeah, I could do that. My motorhome is 33 feet long. It's 12 foot 2 to go in a garage. Okay? I mean, I do have one other option, but, you know, I can put, where I store it right now, I could build a cover for it. And I could downsize this building some, some. You know, it wouldn't have to be, you know, or a 12-foot door. Or you something to put 12-foot 2 motorhome in, you gotta have a 14-foot door.
Right.
Makes it a 16-foot side. Which is a big building. I'm not gonna deny that. I could downsize it some. Wouldn't need, nowhere near that eve height.
I was going to say, whether there are trees that he has to move one way or the other. I, I think if, I think there may be one or two trees he has to move regardless. Trees are not considered hardships. Fences are not considered hardships. Those are also, um, part of the personal property. Uh, the only thing that fits within hardship in this particular instance is the topography. The topography may be the floodway or it may be the flood plain, but if I'm understanding staff correctly, it's going to be in the flood plain regardless. If you grant the variance, it's in the flood plain. If you don't grant the variance, it's in the flood plain. So the hardship can't be the flood plain. It has to be the floodway. So then the question needs to be, if you're going to look at criteria number eight and you're going to grant the variance to the minimum extent possible, is there enough room to put the building behind the 100-foot and avoid the flood plain? Am I understanding that, no, of, of the floodway? And did we get a calculation on that stuff?
From GIS, it still wouldn't be in the floodway, but GIS isn't, like, it can still be shifted a little, so it's hard to, unless you actually get a survey of where the actual flood plain is, I mean floodway, it'd be hard, because the floodways-
So, he's, in Mr. Dietrich's own words, and, and I want the Dietrichs to, to also know, we are not angry at them in any way. We just want Shady Crest to retain its character and its openness and its design.
I'm sorry to cut you off respectfully. Your time is up for the three minutes.
Right. Thank you.
So we'd like to move on to Ron, I'm sorry, to Ms. Leza-
Lisa. My name is Lisa Brownstein. I live at-
Lisa Brownstein. Sorry.
I blame my dad for the spelling. I live at 3904 Shady Crest. We've been there about 30 years. And I'm like Sylvia. This is nothing against the Dietrichs. I don't know the Dietrichs. They wave when I pass them. I've heard from their neighbors. They're lovely people. I hate that we're having any kind of strife in the neighborhood. I see Mr. Dietrich working in his garden. I know he takes good care of it. I did watch the previous session online. And one of the things that Ms. Dietrich said was, well, everybody there has a barn, or, or something to that effect. And I thought, I don't think there are that many outbuildings in our neighborhood. I'm one of the people that walks in the neighborhood. So the next time I went out, I started counting them. And I was surprised by the number of auxiliary buildings that neighbors had. The reason I didn't know they were there is because they were set so far back toward the back of the property. They're just not conspicuous. You don't notice them. So it doesn't really change the character of the neighborhood. Um, our neighborhood, as other people have said, it is not a cookie cutter neighborhood. Every house is different. We love that about the neighborhood. But I do think everybody needs to follow the rules that the city has set out. The rules are there to protect our neighborhoods, to set standards that will keep our property values up. Thank you very much for your consideration and I appreciate all the volunteer hours you guys put in.
Thank you. Uh, Ron, and then we will move to Joanne Ella. Eli? Ellis?
Good evening. My name is Ron Brownstein. And I live at 3904 Shady Crest with my wife Lisa, who is the most beautiful woman in this room right now.
Those points will not help right now.
First off, I want to thank the board. This board, ladies and gentlemen, is a voluntary board. They serve for two years without compensation. They give their time here to be appointed. They have to be a good community member and live in the city of Pearland. I also want to thank your professional staff. They have produced a 92-page report. That took a lot of consideration and thought into their reports and their recommendations, and I certainly appreciate that. You know, we moved to Pearland because we consider Pearland one of the best small towns in Texas. And it is rated that way because of three primary reasons. We have an exemplary school district. We have low crime. And our city development is governed by a uniform code of zoning regulations. And it's so nice to know that when you live in a residence, you don't have to worry that a neighbor is going to be building or maintaining a business next to you or a mobile home park or an apartment next to you if you're in zoned residential area. So, we know these regulations. And you're part of that as the board is designed to protect and preserve our community and keep it one of the best places to live. Uh, I personally almost had an accident two months ago when somebody on West Mary's Creek decided to not yield or stop at that stop sign and cross right in front of me as I was coming into my subdivision, turning right, right next door to the Dietrichs. And that's without any obstruction yet or a building. And you imagine, my goodness, it's the only entrance, the only exit into our subdivision when you cross Mary's Creek Bridge. We have so many wonderful new families with children all around us. We're not any longer an old, we're an old community with a lot of mature citizens, but now we have a lot of youth in there. And they're on their bicycles, their electric scooters, their motorized motorcycle little kids. So, it's a particularly dangerous intersection. I cannot stress that enough. And finally, I would ask that you not grant this variance because I'm afraid it would open up a floodgate for anybody else in our neighborhood or in the city of Pearland to request a variance of this nature.
Thank you, sir. Respectfully, thank you, sir. Like to move it to Joanne. And after Joanne, Jamie Shaw. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Ellis. I live at 4104 Shady Crest Drive, where I have been for over 20 years. In, um, in our opinion, if this variance is granted and the proposed structure is built, this will affect, firstly, affect the surrounding property owner all in our neighborhood. Not only will it affect the adjacent properties, but it will also affect every member of the Shady Crest community that has to pass by on a daily basis with a non-conforming structure. A non-conforming structure that will exist because of an unnecessary variance was granted due to longstanding ordinance to satisfy others. We also have a structure in our backyard of which we went through the proper channels and built it according to code, just like all the other residents in the neighborhood. The effects of the variance request, if granted, and the proposed structure, if built, as proposed, will have a major impact on our community. A community that, again, has been very sought after, is a desirable place to live and to raise our children and to keep them safe. So, I oppose this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Jamie Shaw. I live at 3914 Shady Crest Drive. Um, good evening. All of us are here tonight because we love our community. I personally think Ms. Judy is one of the nicest people I have ever met. Um, but being nice does not change that we don't want a precedent set, city rules altered, or our deed restrictions violated. Shady Crest is one of the most historic communities in Pearland, and all of us just want to keep it that way. That being said, I'd like to address criteria number seven for variance approval, which states that the request cannot be made to reduce an existing financial hardship. Per the homeowner's own submission to this board, his hardship is based upon the amount and cost of dirt to place the building in the properly zoned area. This is not a valid hardship as defined by the variance and not worthy of setting precedents and changing the overall look of Shady Crest as a subdivision. I did try to reach out to the company that Mr. Dietrich submitted his quotes of cost from to the board, which was A&amp;M Construction, as my own landscaper thought that this price was very elevated. My hope was to see if I could assist in obtaining a discount to help alleviate some of this claimed hardship. However, I was never able to reach this company, nor could I find a record of them in Brazoria County. Since Mr. Dietrich owned a landscaping company and his close relative currently has a tree cutting company, I would think he'd be able to get this price lowered on his own, reducing his own hardship. Additionally, the cost he is claiming as hardship for moving the electrical poles should not be considered as the city advised it would have to be relocated, regardless of where the building is placed, due to the building's height. It should be noted that the pole was already moved, a fence was already built, and several trees were cut down to prepare the area that he desires for placement. Lastly, I'd like to draw the board's attention to city's unified development code and zoning regulations. Section 2.4.2. This states that a storage building, um, sorry. It states that a storage building is prohibited in the front yard except for leased portables, such as a pod. This building, by his own submission, is to be a metal storage building. And its placement, according to the chart, is in line with this front door, which by code makes the structure in the front yard and therefore not allowed by this code. Thank you very much for your time and for helping us uphold the city's codes.
Thank you. Trey Shaw. And after Trey, we have Troy Shaw. Trey and- Oh, you filled out two of them? So somebody filled out two. I'm looking at two here. I'm not that crazy. Crazy sometimes. So if, or you are Troy or Trey?
Troy.
Okay. So we have two Troy's and we're gonna have a Brian next.
You only got three minutes.
Uh, Ambroster, or Ambroster.
Good evening, board. My name is Troy Shaw. I have a slide presentation here. If we can get it loaded. By the way, I live at 3914 Shady Crest Drive. Okay, as you've heard, we're, we're a community of wanting to keep things right. And, um, Lisa had mentioned that there was an enormous amount of outbuildings in our subdivision. I took it upon myself to travel around the neighborhood and take pictures. And it shows that each and every one of these outbuildings are located at the 100-foot mark. I also had a conversation with Bob and Judy's neighbor that lived just down the street, 2107, Mary's Creek, West Mary's Creek. It's Ms. Barb Schoppsky. She couldn't be here tonight because she's elderly and she's quite ill. Oh, never mind. You lied. Sorry. Anyway, she can tell her own story now. Um, but I just wanted to show the board pictures of our neighborhood and how all the buildings that are built there are set back. There's not one variance in our enormous buildings that were built back. And I want to apologize to Bob and Judy because at the first meeting, I called the building a monstrosity. I have a similar building and I call mine a monstrosity. So, that's the verbiage I get. I wasn't any way, shape, or form trying to be, uh, mean or overt about their building. I do not oppose, as is most of the folks here, do not oppose them building a building. We just want the building built back in its proper place as the, um, his topographical map shows that he can do it. Can he tweak it a little bit? Absolutely. He can move it to the right. He's got like a 24-foot offset to not be close to the floodway line. There's, there's many things that he could do. We didn't, we didn't, we, I had the conversation with Bob when he moved in here. We don't care what you do as long as you do it in, or in accordance with the city ordinances. That's all we're asking, is for it to be built in accordance with the city ordinances. This has caused great strife between our neighborhood, where at one point in time, everybody waved at everybody and everybody said hi to everybody and everybody knew everybody. I have the Christmas party on my back patio every year and invite every resident to come to our, our house. We are a community of togetherness. And this has built a huge strife, a huge rift in our neighborhood. And I'm sorry for that. But all's we're asking is the board to take into consideration and to, and, and you see that it can be done in accordance with the codes and the ordinances. That's all we're asking for. Build your building, build it to code. That's all we're asking.
Thank you, sir. Respectfully, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian?
I'm gonna need, I need her help to find my, I can't get to the screen. Sorry about that. We're IT, we're IT challenged here.
After Brian is Lori Joyce.
She's gotta get me up here. It'll be just a second. My name is Brian Armbruster. I live at 4009 Long Heritage Drive, and I am speaking on behalf of a group of individuals, so I do respectfully request the five minutes. The City of Pearland adopted the UDC...
If we could resolve the time issue first. As we've heard, 14 other people in the neighborhood, I would say that when you speak on behalf of them, you would be their representative. 14 other people have already spoken.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, which group are you speaking?
I'm speaking on behalf of a group of elderly, people who don't want to speak tonight, and my wife and my children. There are about eight or nine people that I'm speaking on behalf of.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Chair, then it would be in your discretion whether it be five or three minutes. Traditionally, I think the way that city council has said the five minutes is for a civic association or an organized group of that nature. But it's in your discretion whether it be three or five, and before we switch the time or before we adjust the time, we need to hear from you on that.
Yeah, we're gonna adjust the time to four minutes, so you can have four minutes.
That'll work, because I'm just a little over three.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Brian Armbruster. I live at 4009 Long Heritage Drive. And as we all know, the City of Pearland adopted the UDC that requires 100-foot setback for properties that are one acre or larger for any accessory structure. These rules and regulations are in complete alignment with the deed restrictions that were recorded for the Shady Crest subdivision in Brazoria County on December the 28th of 1959 that run with the land that also require 100-foot setback for accessory structures of any built on the properties. These were put in place by the city to preserve and protect the property values, to establish a visual appeal of the community, a sense of community, and continuity. Mr. Dietrich is requesting to change the setback to 50 feet rather than 100-foot setback, and he alleges that the 100-foot floodway may be an issue. Fortunately, the topographical survey that the council requested shows that there's more than adequate space behind the 100-foot line to locate his large barn and not be in the floodway. You can see the delineation of the floodway is the yellow line there. To the left-hand, upper-left-hand side would be the floodway. The lower-right-hand portion would be the floodplain. You can see here, the blue rectangle indicates the location of the building at the 100-foot setback, clearly away from the floodway, outside of the floodway. The next slide is going to show... If we can get to it. The building located at the 100-foot setback and moved to the right towards Long Heritage Drive at the 10-foot building line, therefore moving it further away from the floodway. So as you can see, there's more than adequate space behind the flood, the 100-foot setback to allow for this structure to be built in the configuration that he has designed. Mr. Dietrich also mentions that he would have to cut down some trees. The trees are personal property and not a hardship. He's already had to remove three trees in anticipation of building at the 50-foot line. He mentions that he would have to move his fence, which is personal property and not a hardship, and coincidentally, Mr. Dietrich installed that fence in April of this year in anticipation of locating the building at the 50-foot setback. He's mentioned that he would have to move electrical lines that serve his property only, that are his personal electrical lines, and this is not a hardship. These affect only him, and he owns those lines. Additionally, if you look, the little red circle that in the upper-right-hand corner of the building at the 50-foot setback shows the electrical line that crosses the building at the 50-foot line. So that would have to be moved anyway if he was allowed to build at 50 feet. So this is not a hardship. At the 100-foot setback or further, he would not have to move that electrical service. So this is not a hardship. He mentions that odor from the lift station is an issue. There has been one report since July of 2020 regarding odor from the lift station, and that was at the time that they were installing the new lift station and converting over and transitioning to the new lift station. Once that was complete, there has not been another complaint of odor that's been recorded by the city in their service records. So this is not a hardship. Mr. Dietrich now adds that it will cost him more money for the dirt work if he has to build it 100-foot setback. The UDC clearly states that a variance cannot be granted for financial gain of the applicant. So this is not a hardship. It's very unfortunate that the entire property is located either in the 100-year floodplain or the floodway.
Respectfully, sir, that's your four minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your volunteer service. I appreciate everything you do.
We have Lori Joyce, and then after Lori is Naomi Stevens.
Good evening. I'm Lori Joyce. I live at 1936 Timber Creek Drive, but I did grow up in Shady Crest. And I'm also a real estate agent. I've been an agent for 14 years here in Pearland. And as many of the neighbors have mentioned, that Shady Crest is a very desirable neighborhood. It is desirable because of the huge trees, the openness, and the views. And putting this particular structure in the location where he wished to position it, I do believe that it is dangerous, and I do believe that it's not a good fit cosmetically in that position for Shady Crest. So I'm asking that you do not grant him this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. After Naomi, we would have Dorothy Clark.
Naomi Stevens, 3422 Shady Crest. People choose Pearland. They choose Pearland for so many reasons. Maybe it's just the way it's laid out. Maybe it's the people. Maybe it's the active HOA that we have. And maybe it's because we almost have a private school to ourself out there. My children both attended there. I've been here 44 years. I too had motor homes, a 42-foot. I was never able to build anything over it. Didn't even try. We didn't even ask. Many things that we see in our neighborhood have been done from all kinds of wonderful additions to our properties, and they've all done nothing but make it look better. And so for you members, we just hope that you've circled our little town back here in the... on the creek and give us this opportunity to not change the variance.
Thank you.
I'm Dorothy Clark, and I live at 2101 Lake Edge Drive. And I'm a pretty newcomer there. All these other people, I've only been there 44 years. I got there as soon as I could, though. And it is everything, and I agree with everything that everyone has said concerning the variances and the floods and the site of the building. And as long as I've been there, Shady Crest has prevailed with all the residents wanting to preserve what we have. And we bought a lot there. We looked at the deed restrictions, and we definitely went by them. We had a motor home once, but it wasn't a hardship that we had to build a big building for. I firmly believe that a variance should not be granted, and I hope that this board will see it that way and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Raska. After Dorothy, we would have Cliff Santillana.
Hello. My name is Dorothy Raska. I've lived in Shady Crest for 57 years. And we also moved there because it had a few restrictions when we had shell roads and the whole thing, you know. We didn't have sewer. We didn't have water. We had to put it all in ourselves. But we moved there because there was restrictions there already since 1959. And I hope that we can hold on to these restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff. After Cliff, we would have Judy Dietrich.
My name is Cliff Santillana. I live at 2105 West Mary's Creek Lane. Good evening, everybody. I just want to voice my opinion. Everyone's voicing there, so I'm not opposed to it. I guess I see it a little bit differently than everybody in here, and yes, I'm new to the neighborhood. Been here for middle October, be two years. I kind of see it that, you know, it's this man's property. He bought it. He paid for it. I know Mr. Dietrich. Great man. Love him as a neighbor, and I don't think he's gonna put something up that's gonna be big, gaudy, and ugly. I think it's gonna be nice, good-looking. So, I mean, I'm just not opposed to it, and like I hear all this stuff about, you know, safety factor, this and that. Whenever you're driving a car and you come up to an area and you're like, eh, you know, I don't know what's going on here, you tend to slow down. You tend to get a little bit more cautious when you're walking. When you're riding a bike, you're already naturally cautious, because you know cars and stuff are a little bit more overpowering than what you're on, so, you know, maybe. I don't think so, but I just want to get up here and say that I'm not opposed to it.
Thank you, sir. Judy Dietrich, and after Judy is Robert Dietrich. Oh, yeah.
My name is Judy Dietrich. Live at 2101 West Mary's Creek Lane. My family has been in this area longer than any of y'all in this room have been alive. So I know all this area, Friendswood, Pearland, Santa Fe, Alvin, all of it. I know what deed restrictions are. We lived in Shady Crest, I mean, lived in Town Lake Estates for 10 years. I know what they are. We didn't get a copy of the deed restrictions when we bought the house. In fact, the president of the HOA sat in our living room and told us we wouldn't have a problem building a barn or a garage, whatever way you want to call it. We've earned our motor home. We've saved all of our lives. We've worked hard. I do want to put a cover over it to protect it. Anybody with common sense would want to do that. The other thing is, as far as safety, there's been two wrecks that I've witnessed, because I sit on my back porch all the time, that I've been hap... that's happened at the end of the bridge on the other side of the stop sign. There's nothing blocking that view right now. If you're riding a bicycle or you're walking, watch the people that are backing out of their driveways, because they can really take you out. The other thing, as far as the values on the property, they're never going down until the economy falls. I have a daughter-in-law that's a realtor. The values have gone up a lot. When you can buy a 1,525-square-foot house and pay $430,000, that tells me nothing's gonna hurt the value in that Shady Crest residence, that area. The other thing is the trees. I love trees. I planted 40 trees on our property in Alvin and watered them. An hour a tree every day. We had to cut down those two trees. Two of them were rotten. One of them had, what, 50 gallons of water that came out of it? I don't own any businesses. My husband doesn't own any businesses. His brother owns a business in Alvin, mowing business. So that's some untruths. The other thing, as far as, we've been hassled. I have my phone message from a realtor that's good friends with the president of the HOA suggesting that we buy a house up front because it might have more of what we might want, and she would pay cash for my home. I saved that message. That's a hassle. And you're talking about being friendly? Wow. You want us to sell and move out? I've been here all my life. That's not right. And I... I'm sorry. I'm friendly. I love people. This is not right. And you're gonna put my barn, or garage, whatever you want to call it, in the floodplain? I have pictures from Harvey, where the house that is elevated that we live in, it didn't get up into the house, but that whole yard was covered in water. You put the garage back there, yeah, it's gonna flood. He had 10 inches of rain in his house before he ever bought it. Yeah, it's full. It was full of water. I don't want that, and you shouldn't want it for me.
Yes, ma'am. Respectfully, thank you. Eric Four. This is our last person wishing to speak for or against.
Good evening. I'm Eric Four. I'm a 17-year resident of Shady Crest, living at 2102 West Mary's Creek Lane, directly across the street from the Dietrichs, and would be most impacted of everybody in this room. I'd like to thank the council for taking their time to listen to us on this matter. At the last meeting, the council suggested a 70-foot setback, and the Dietrichs are now requesting, or have been requesting, a 50-foot setback. So there's only a difference of 20 foot that they're trying to get. There are 170-plus homes in our community. Dozens of the homes throughout the neighborhood have detached garages and/or metal buildings. We live here because we like our larger lots. We are fortunate enough in Shady Crest to have room on our property to be able to build other structures. And this is all the Dietrichs are wanting to do. They're wanting to build a garage to protect their equipment inside instead of under tarps throughout their yard. There were multiple emails sent to the city voicing their opposition on the garage with the variance sign that's been in their yard for over two months. It's troubling that only two people stopped personally to talk to them about it. What is most upsetting is that before submitting all the opposition... Ooh, ha, ha. I lost it. Sorry about that. Pressed the wrong thing. What is most upsetting is that before submitting opposition, not one person came and spoke to them before sending all the emails, the 33 opposing emails that were sent to get the correct information. The trees that were previously removed were because they were dead. They plan to remove the small shed once their garage is built. The building on... They can't build a building on the left side because they don't own that property, and there is a stop sign in front of my house. They are just asking for a setback to be 20 feet less than what y'all suggested last time. We love this community for the way people come together and help one another. You know, if there's a tree that falls, neighbors are there with chainsaws to help. If there's a death in the community, neighbors are there to comfort one another. If someone needs help, they ask on Facebook, and neighbors are there to instantly assist. If someone needs work on their home, neighbors are there with recommendations. We all have things on our property that others may not find appealing, and it is not right to dictate how others use their property as long as they are within code. With all the comments on the traffic at the corner, I've suggested this before, but I think that road humps need to be on that street. I am not opposed to the thing. Thank you very much, and have a blessed day.
Thank you, sir. So we'd like to now move into staff, commission, advocate discussion. Any questions?
I have a question. I was not present at apparently... Excuse me?
June meeting.
At the June meeting. And it is my understanding that the application was denied. Was there a final determination, or was it just postponed?
It was just postponed, ma'am.
All right. There's been some commentary about a suggestion by this board. I don't know that the board's role is to make suggestions or to imply an approval. Was there a finding by the board officially making any kind of suggestion?
My recollection is that there was a motion to reduce the setback from 50 by 20 feet, making it a 30-foot setback, and that motion failed.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that I was... There was some comment about a suggestion at 70, and so that motion failed last time, correct?
Correct, yes. So I guess it depends on how you're doing your math, adding or subtracting from it, but that's where it was.
And today, we are certainly not bound by anything that did or did not happen in the And today, we are certainly not bound by anything that did or did not happen in the June meeting, correct?
No, ma'am, you're not bound by it. You can consider the testimony or the minutes or the commentary that you heard. You could base, the, it was a full new staff report. All the information that staff had, they've provided, so you could base it on everything that you heard at this meeting today.
And this question's for staff. It's my understanding that there were written submissions from the community, both in support and opposing tonight's application. Is there a count of how many submissions were for and how many were against? And there may not be an official count. I know there, there were quite a few included.
It was here.
Yeah, if you go back to the public comment slide, Mohammed, so of written comments from the time we originally started the request in June, I guess technically was submitted the month before, so in May. There have been three in support and 33 against, and that includes all that had been collected since that date in May. From, from when it originally went to the newspaper, that first, the first time in June.
I may have some additional questions, but I know, I may have a question.
I have an additional question for staff, if I could. One of the witnesses or persons commenting tonight referred to the UDC in a chapter 2.4.2. Did, did any of y'all check that out to see if there's a commentary in that regarding a, uh, front door versus the front line of a, of an accessory building?
So I was following along with that comment, but I missed one of the numbers, so I only got 242.
2.4.2, I believe.
That's what I wrote down as 242. I, I, I hope I-
So our Unified Development Code has four numbers, so it would be like 2.2.4.2, 2242. As an example.
Is there anybody in the audience, or do they remember? I, I'm sorry, I don't remember who spoke about that, but if-
If you'll go up to the microphone and, thanks.
If that's, uh, turns out to be relevant. What, what was your name?
What number is it?
Um, it, from what it shows, it, from the snippet, it's 2.4.2, but that's missing the number of the chapter. I apologize, I don't have that down, but it is in the, uh, the UDC. And it states that storage buildings in the front, front yard are prohibited, except for leased portables. And if you actually search the, the UDC, if you just search pods, it should pop right up, because that's the only time that I saw pods referenced anywhere else in the code.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. It looks like staff is, uh-
Mr. Schrum, if I may, I, I believe I've got the exact reference that she was, uh, speaking of. So under section 2.4.2.5, R1, single-family residential, 1 district, sub-paragraph G is the one that talks about outside storage. And, and the language that she provided tracks with what I heard just a moment ago. And, and I think that staff, when it's looking at this, the, the key term in there is the front, oops. Is the front yard, and then when you get to chapter 4, I believe is where staff, is it chapter 4? Talks about front yards in the diagrams, and that's where the language that staff has provided in its staff report to you. But it's the same thing.
But also with that clarification, outdoor storage is the storage of goods or materials specifically in the front yard. So not the development of an accessory structure that then houses goods or items.
Okay, so bottom line, that really does an effect or apply to our decision-making on this particular request.
Correct. This is to, that, that section is to keep people from erecting a storage device in the front yard.
Okay. One other point of clarification, I, I may have gotten this backward in my memory, but when we looked at the diagram of where the flood plain and the floodway is, remind me, is the, the land to the left of that yellow line, is that the flood plain? Or is that the floodway? Because we can't build in the flood plain, if I understand.
That would be flipped. You can't build in the floodway, and the area north and to the left on that diagram is the floodway.
Right, so the, the green that is on the screen right now is the floodway.
Good, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I, uh, I have another question, a clarification, Mr. Dietrich, if I could ask a question of you. If you could go to the microphone over there for all of us, please. Thank you. I, I listened carefully to what your commentary was when you spoke, and I, I recall you making a statement to the effect that because of the difference in elevation of front and back of the accessory, of the structure, that you would have to build or move dirt there. And then your comment was, and I guarantee you, I will be in the floodway. Did I mishear you?
No. Put that structure that close, still in the flood plain, when you get through, you've got to put slopes around that building. That will wind up putting me in the floodway.
So the building itself will not be in the floodway? You'll just have to move dirt.
Not allowed to put dirt in the floodway? Is that not a true statement?
So since that's getting a little technical, I'm going to ask our engineer to-
Would that mean then that if the dirt winds up in the floodway, that we can't do that? Is that against the code?
Uh, uh, thank you. Placement of dirt in floodways not allowed by our ordinance, so flood, our flood hazard ordinance strictly prohibit placement of any structures and dirt and anything within the floodway. And there's only one provision that if clomer is done, that's conditional layer of map provision is done, then it is allowed, and that's normally done for the bigger subdivisions. For smaller size this property, it is not practical to do, go through those kind of like hydraulic studies.
So it would not, it would not pass inspection, I guess. Is that the way to say it?
Yeah, we would not even approve the construction of that, because even if zoning and variance approves this variance today, so everything from that point will be based on our engineering design criteria. So that will just allow the structure to be put in 50 feet or 70 feet or 100 feet, but it still needs to meet all the engineering design criteria manual and our flood ordinance when we approve the construction plan.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's all for me.
Uh, Robert, I have a question for you, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned something about sloping the, the ground to get down to from your building slab. What elevation are you planning to put the building slab at?
It's going to be what the city tells me, but it's going to be outside the flood plain. The building has to be built up, and that's probably three or four feet worth of dirt.
Thank you very much, sir.
I have some follow-up questions. Can we see the screen that lists the eight criteria that our board must review? And it's my understanding that all eight must be yes in order for us to grant the variance?
So staff's recommendation is, or this is staff's analysis of those criteria. If your analysis, I think I'm stealing Lawrence's discussion points here, but if your analysis proves otherwise, then, you know, that, that is up to the board to determine if the applicant meets the criteria.
But ultimately, we must find all eight are yes.
That would be, yes, ma'am. That's a board decision, and in order for you to grant a variance application, all eight would need to be met in your mind. Your, the collective board's mind.
And what's on the screen is what the staff has recommended the answer to each one of these criteria would be.
Yes, ma'am. That would be staff analysis for those eight criteria.
And I believe that some of the, at least two of the written, um, public commentary submissions, I also went through each of the eight criteria, and actually found that four and five, according to the submissions, would be no instead of yes. In particular, page 49 and 50 of 92 of the submissions, and also page 56 and 57 of 92, those two individuals went through the eight criteria and placed their opinions. I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
I, I'm sure everybody appreciates knowing that the board takes their job seriously and actually does read through those packets, so I appreciate you identifying that you got to the end of the book.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'd like to move into consideration and possible action. No, we, we're, we're past the point of that right now. No, we're past the point of that, right. Thank you respectfully. Thank you. We'd like to, would you place the? Yeah. Okay.
I understand sometimes the temptation is to do a motion to deny. If, if staff was recommending a denial, I just want to remind everybody, if you do a motion to deny, yes mo, a yes vote means no, and a no vote means yes.
I want to make sure the board understands what the approve, what we are trying to approve or deny. So would you, I would like to make that clear in the, the first statement. So we are to get a good understanding of what the approval or denial is.
Sure thing. So the request is to reduce the front setback for the accessory structure from 100 foot to 50 foot. The, after the board asked for clarification with the topographic survey and to identify whether that was the least amount of setback necessary to request.
Thank you for the clarification. We have a motion.
I do. I'll make a motion. To avoid confusion, so that we're not voting on a double negative, I would like to move that the, I'd like to make a motion to approve VARZ 2207, front setback variance for accessory structures in single-family residential 1 R1 zoning district.
It's been motion and second. Any discussion?
I guess, I'm confused.
Do we approve the application? If so, we raise our hand. If we are against-
The approval is to, to allow them to reduce the-
That's the motion. Yes, that's the, that's what's on the table now.
Can I, can I make an, am I allowed to make a difference?
Yes, sir. You're allowed to make a motion to amend, if you're so inclined.
I would like to make a motion to approve the reduction in, in the required setback from 100 feet to 70 feet.
Okay, so now we need to, we need to look at what motion we're going to have on the table. So right now, we do have a motion on the table. So we need to either, uh, take the motion off and have a discussion on which one we want to have on the table. Because, um, that way we can get a clarity of what we're going to do.
I will withdraw my motion so that we can have a discussion and have only one motion at a time being presented.
I appreciate that. I understand it gets confusing, and traditionally, you wouldn't have more than one motion on the table. A motion to amend, and I've not heard a second for that yet. But if you dispose of the first motion, the one that you made, Mr. Vaya, and if there's a lack of a second on this, we don't dispose of the issue. So that's why I was okay with a motion to amend. And if I understand you correct, uh, member Acosta, it's to go from the 50-foot setback to actually a 70-foot setback, which is a 30% reduction from the 100-foot setback. Am I doing my math correctly? Does that make sense to everybody else?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, okay.
So I've not heard a second for that yet. But, and the only reason why I wouldn't normally say, making the motion to amend in this particular circumstance is, if, if you were to just vote on Mr. Vaya's, it's over.
Right, that's why I wanted to make sure we had clarity.
Right, but, but there would be nothing left to be on the table to discuss at that point.
Exactly. So is there a second for the motion that's been put out for a reduction of 30, 30 feet?
Second.
It's been second. So are we voting?
So we're voting on the amendment. If you want the amendment, if you want this structure to be 70 feet back total, if you want the variance to be 70 feet back total, you would vote yes on the motion to amend. If you were in opposition to that, you would vote no on the motion to amend.
Okay. So right now, we have a motion on the table for approval of VARZ 22-7, and it's been amended to, instead of the 50-foot setback, to a 30-foot setback.
A 70-foot-
Excuse me, 70-foot setback, I'm sorry. 70-foot setback.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion is?
So the motion would fail.
Fail at three, uh, two to three.
At two to three, and then the original motion, Mr. Vaya's motion, which would be to approve it, and that's just to state it in the positive.
Right.
So in this, in this particular case, a yes vote grants the variance, and a no vote denies the variance.
So a motion is on the floor right now for VARZ to approve as presented with the setback from 100 feet to 50 feet. There's been a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion failed zero to five.
Correct. Thank you, sir.
We'd like to move into our second order of business, which is consideration and possible action for VARZ 22-15.
I think you might have, uh, several people trying to get home and catch whatever's on Thursday nights at 8 o'clock. You might want to wait five minutes, is what I'm suggesting, is people get up and clear the room.
Please, please, uh, do it expeditiously if you're leaving. Please have your conversations outside of the door. We're still in session. Please have your conversations outside the door. We're still in session. Please have your conversations outside the door. We're still in session.
Thank you, Chair, and- And.
We have two.
I think we have to have a, maybe a five-minute recess. We have two people in the restroom.
I was gonna say, we just lost Quorum as he stepped outside that door.
Exactly, so.
That's at seven thirty-two PM? Is that what you read?
That is correct. Seven thirty-two, we have a brief intermission while our board members go to the restroom. If we could continue our session for the zoning board of adjustments meeting for September, we're back in session at seven thirty-five PM. And our second order of business is consideration and possible action, V A R Z twenty-two dash fifteen, a special exception for alternative screening fence between a commercial and residential property. And this is a request by the mid-range group applicant on behalf of Killen Steakhouse owner to allow a special exception as permitted by the Unified Development Code Ordinance Number Two Thousand dash T to allow the replacement of a fence between residential and commercial with an alternative non-conforming material, a chain link fence with privacy slats, and a hedge row at the length of the residence in lieu of the required masonry screening wall in general commercial. This is a general location of sixty-four twenty-five Broadway Street, Pearland, Texas. Staff report?
Thank you, Chair. Let me introduce Patrick once again to present this case. Mohammed, let me get it correct. Mohammed, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. Members of the zoning board of adjustment, good evening. Variance, I'm gonna go ahead and state the request first. Variance twenty-two dash fifteen is a request for approval of a special exception to the Unified Development Code to allow replacement of a fence between a residential and a commercial properties with an alternative non-conforming material consisting of a channeling fence with privacy, privacy slats, and a hedge row at the length of the residence in lieu of the required masonry screening wall in the general commercial district. And these are section four-point-two, point-two, point-four, J four, and section four-point-two, four-point-one. And as you stated before, the general location is at sixty-four twenty-five Broadway Street, and the property is currently zoned general commercial, and it's directly abutting a residential zone property to the north. So, so far, staff did not receive any public comments on this request. Again, restating that request is that it's a special to allow a previously existing masonry fence to be replaced with an eight-foot chain link fence with private, privacy slats and a hedge row of shrubs to be provided all along the portion of the property boundary that's adjacent to the single-family residence. And I will explain that in a slide in a minute. And here, we've got a zoning map, and again, it shows the property located within the general commercial zoning district. It's surrounded by residential to the north and pretty much general business and general commercial from the east, west, and south. And this is the future land use plan. It shows the property located in the business commercial at land use designation. Just a little bit of history on this property. It was annexed in nineteen ninety-five, and the property was developed in two thousand two as a restaurant. And that concrete wall that was, got dilapidated, appeared to have been built with, with the restaurant back in two thousand two, and it was to basically provide a screening between the residential or the commercial property. And just a little bit piece of information is that the city council had approved an amendment to the U D C granting the zoning board of adjustment authority to decide request for special exception, allowing non-conforming buffer on a developed property that existed prior to the adoption of the major screening wall requirements to install an alternative screening fence, provided that proposed a screening fence is hundred percent opaque. This took place in August two thousand, in twenty twenty-one. Subsequently, the applicant submitted a request for a special exception for this property, and that request for an alternative screening material was consisting of also channeling fence with its slats, and that was denied by this board on October seventh, twenty twenty-one. This is a aerial map showing the surrounding uses. Again, property within the red rectangle is the subject property, and it's surrounded by residential property on the north side. I've got daycare, kind of a mixed commercial daycare, and another commercial user on the east side, shopping center on the south side, across the street from Broadway, and then a hotel to the west. These are some views of the, of the property from different locations. The one to the left is a view of that existing boundary where the major screening wall used to be, but taken, this shot is taken from the residential side, looking back into the commercial side. And on the right side is a view that's looking directly from the restaurant parking lot towards the wall, along the boundary between the residential and the commercial side. So looking directly towards the north. This is, this view again is still from that parking lot for the restaurant, looking directly toward the fence that's between the residential and the commercial. Another shot also on the right, and this is a view again, this highlights the, the boundary, basically where the code applies, and that's where the red line is, and that's the area where the city requires a major screening wall or a landscape buffer with a vegetative screen, and that's where that existing major screening wall used to be, and a big portion of it now doesn't exist anymore. So, and just moving to this slide here, and this is, shows with the green area, that's where the applicant intends to provide a hedge row in conjunction with the chain link fence that they're proposing to install as a replacement, as an alternative to the, the major screening wall. This is a, as a detail of the channeling fence that is intended to be installed along that boundary between the residential and the commercial. It's a channeling fence with, with the slats. And this is another detail or a view that was provided by the applicant, and, and I think we have some pictures of that similar material as shown, that show some gaps within that, within these slats, and we'll have it later in the, the presentation. So from here, I'll turn it to Martin, and he's gonna talk about the approval criteria for, from the U D C.
Thank you, Mohammed. So as this is different from a variance, and the request is for the special exception, this only needs to, the request only needs to meet one out of the nine criteria for approval. This does meet the criteria to allow a non-conforming buffer on a developed property that existed prior to the adoption of the masonry screening wall requirement, install an alternative screening fence, provided that the proposed screening fence is a hundred percent opaque. If you'll go to the next slide. I don't often pose a question within my slide deck, but I, we were provided with an example fence, and I'd like to ask the question, what color is the building behind the fence? Take a moment to think about that. Everyone answer in your own head. On the next click, we'll identify what the color is. You can see that it's a white building, and you can see that through some of those slats, that there is opportunity to have visual nuisance penetrate through the screen. Next slide. So with that, we've got several images on this slide showing both a straight view on the left-hand side with an up-close image, and then a, a view of the same building shifted over slightly to get that angled view, and then an up-close view, trying to duplicate the same angle. So there's been discussion with the applicant about being able to provide the vegetative screen against the whole buffer yard. This image in this slide is meant to highlight the area that will eventually have the vegetative screen installed, and the two parallel green lines are to indicate the area that would be installed with the vegetative as proposed by the applicant. The next slide shows the dimensions for those areas as you moved from west to east. You can see that it is at a slight angle, so it does decrease in size from roughly four foot to roughly three foot as you move closer to the restaurant. But we also have existing landscaping on the site. So if you travel along Lazy Bin Street, you'll notice that there are existing landscaping provided against either the sidewalk or against the drainage ditch that is planted within a three-foot-three and a three-foot-seven dimension. Staff recommendation, the proposed chain link fence with privacy slats and the hedge row of shrubs to provide, to be provided along the portion of the fence adjacent to the single-family residence only isn't sufficient to provide screening for the entire length of the buffer abutting residential property to meet the intent of the Unified Development Code. In staff's opinion, the proposed hedge row of shrubs should be extended along the entire length of the required buffer between the non-residential and residential property. Should the commission choose to approve the request, staff recommends approval with the following conditions, and that condition is a vegetative screen to be planted along the entire length of the required buffer between the non-residential and residential properties consisting of shrubs planted at four feet on center and with minimum height of four foot at planting and at, and at least six feet tall within twelve months. The vegetative screen plant material shall ultimately be approved by the city urban forester. And part of the reason why we are requesting that this be along the entire length is for future redevelopment of the residential property. If that residential property is ever to be redeveloped and either moved to the rear or moved to some, some other position, then the exist, then the proposed landscaping would be out of place with wherever that new residence would be. If we install it today along the entire length, then there is a reduced chance for an issue.
Thank you. Is there an applicant presentation?
Applicants typically speak first.
You, the applicant, sir? Okay, go ahead. Make sure the, is the microphone on? There you go.
My name is Darnell Dow, and I live at sixteen fifteen Garden Glen Lane, Pearland, So I wanted to address a quick situation here with the buffer requiring the vegetation along the entire fence line. I believe a portion of that fence line is actually owned by a neighboring property. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that or not, but maybe someone can clarify that. The prop, the, the western side of the property, where that fence is shared, is owned by hotel. Yes, it is. I mean, I can't, you couldn't pull a permit to have any irrigation done along that line with the expectation of a six-foot hedge and have it, have the irrigation put on another person's property. It's, it's, it's illegal. A T C Q law. So is there maybe another alternative that we can do? I'm asking a question.
Yeah, that's, that's the point. We're trying to, you present what you need to present.
Okay.
And we get into the questions, and we'll get into that. We need to.
Very good.
If you're gonna present something, great. If not, then if you ask your question, then we got it.
Okay, I'm here to present.
Yes, sir.
Well, good evening. Thanks for your time and your volunteer efforts. So under the current conditions, which were subject to the prior U D C, I believe it was from two thousand, when Joseph's Restaurant was built, the existing fence and the need for the six-foot shrubs really can't exist. And the reason for that is, is that there's about, and I think Martin showed, about a three-foot distance from the back of the, or the north side of the property right there to where the existing fence line is, and there's a slope of, I'm, excuse me, the neighboring property to the north is about sixteen inches lower than that property. Okay? So the U D C code did not require, I believe it was a ten-foot buffer, I'm not sure, excuse me, the new one now is a ten-foot buffer, this one here, we cannot achieve that three-to-one slope that is needed to keep that dirt from eroding. The largest problem we see here is that there being, you know, no one-to-three slope that any structure placed here will act as an erosion control barrier as much as it will a fence, and this is why the existing fence is failing and becoming dangerous for the neighbor to the north's grandchildren and even anyone passing by that area. If you look at some photos that I have, I don't know if Martin has those available or not, you can see where the majority of the failures of that fence is occurring because there is literally a foot of that, maybe a. because there is literally a foot of that, maybe up to 16 inches of that buried in the ground on the on the south side of the property, but on the north side of the property, it's completely opened and it's starting to buckle. So. Give me one second, he's gonna find that photo. Keep going, there's maybe a little bit closer down to the ground.
That's all three zip.
Then it must be one of those other ones that showed the Killens fence. You just have to zoom in on it, I can't see that far. Right there. It's hard to see, but there's a drop in slope right there. And I mean, you're creating a a problem there that's going to persist on and on despite what type of cementitious or masonry fence is placed there because of the existing property elevation and the prior U D C that was clearly in compliance at the time. The fence that exists there now is only a six foot high fence. We're now going back with an eight foot high fence at the request of the neighbor to the north, Mrs. Smith, resident here today. And we're also making a few other changes, like putting parking blocks in, which has been part of the destruction of the existing fence. Our request is is to have this permission granted so that, you know, despite being about 90 to 95% opaque, that the hedgerow will also allow for that. And then the slope variations will also allow for some movement in the terrain over time. There are some photos here that I've provided that shows you that right here in Pearland, it's right here where my kids go to school, that despite the movement of the ground and the leaning of a chain link fence, it's not going to fail and start falling apart, creating a hazard. It's, Martin, can you show those photos of the chain link fence? Like that right there, it's leaning over completely. That's, I don't even know what angle that is, but it's falling over into into a detention pond. Innately, it has that propensity to fall towards, you know, whatever lowest spot there is. It's going to continue to do that under any circumstance, whether it's a cementitious fence or a chain link one. It's just that this chain link one provides less of a hazard to one's health. And it's going to be a, it looks like a stained wooden fence from a distance. It's a nice product and, you know, we stand behind it, that's why we're here.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
We'd like to move into persons wishing to speak for or against proposal. We have Robin Smith to speak.
Hello, good evening. I am the homeowner there. My husband's unable to be here because he's very, very ill. We basically have fallen to a point in our lives where we're sick and tired of not having a fence. This is two and a half years of not having a fence, not having privacy. It's been invaded for two and a half years. We're very upset, not only the neighbors for not taking care of it, but for the city, just seems like everybody is just put it on the back burner. I've had little grandchildren in the backyard running around, and that's all I'm going to say about that. The lawyer came by and talked to us. He is Ms. Killens, whatever her name is, lawyer, very nice gentleman. I'm sure she's a very nice lady, too. We did come to the conclusion that the erosion with the elevation issue is a issue with them having longevity and the type of fence that is in code. We're just tired. We want a fence to be put up. But what we do suggest is, as the city proposed, that the vegetation go down the whole length of the property. I don't know, my husband was out there one day, again, very ill man. Nobody was listening to anybody else, and I guess it was concluded that just at the house was okay. I have a patio that extends beyond where I see that it is with a hot tub. I just really would like that privacy. And real quick to, again, I don't mind if they go with the fence. I don't, I just really would like a little bit more of the privacy of the shrubbery. And also, if somebody jumps a curve, I feel like the shrubbery will keep them from coming into my yard. That was my original complaint, is the grandkids, their little playset's right there. The the issue with not knowing whose property it is, when a section of the fence at the very back corner of that property fell down, probably 15 feet about five years ago, my understanding and talking to the city is that it is their responsibility. They never replaced that fence. I ended up wrapping my wooden fence around because nobody would do anything. So we're just tired, we just want to fence up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other persons wishing to speak for or against? Okay, we'd like to move into staff and application and applicant discussion. Questions?
I have a question. Is the property owner here today? The the restaurant, the Killens Restaurant owner? And does the Killens Restaurant owner want to make a presentation or statement? I didn't hear anything from the Killens Restaurant owner. All right. And is the, um, the Ms. Robin Smith mentioned that there was a restaurant attorney here today? Is that, is there, it's my, it's also my understanding that this fence issue was taken up by our board with a, not this particular fence, but previously, and there's a pending litigation? Is there an attorney or attorneys present today that are attorneys of record in that litigation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Yes.
I've got a couple. I'm I'm also concerned about the ownership of the fence line there on the the left side of the screen. Is there a dispute or not about who owns or is responsible with the fence to the, on the left side of the screen that I'm looking at there?
So what I have up on the screen right now is the city's G I S. Thankfully, we have recently received the latest batch of aerial images. So we have a pretty good record of how the property exists today. As you can see, there is a gray line that cuts here through the parking lot. The gray line is not perfectly in line with the aerial image. But that's what happens when you have a two dimensional line over a three dimensional shape. Sometimes the G I S doesn't quite line up right. So you can see that I would say approximately a quarter of the overall length of the fence is in fact on a separate property. So what we are discussing is within the Killens, Killens Restaurant site.
If I may, I don't think that the issue is in regards to who has the authority to put the fence. I believe, and I'm sure that I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, Killens took down the entire length of that fence and intended to replace entire length of the fence. The issue is in regards to the hedgerow. And if I understand the applicant's presentation correctly, they're concerned about putting a continuous hedgerow on the other portion of the property without landscaping, I'm sorry, without irrigation, because they can't put their water on that other person's property. So if that other person wanted their hedgerow to be irrigated, they would have to have their own sprinkler system for that portion, or they would have to come up with some sort of plants that are more native in nature that would meet the city's requirements, that might not need the that type of irrigation daily, weekly, or whatever the schedule might be until it is fixed and can thrive in this area, in the Gulf Coast climate.
So Killens has volunteered, I guess, in a sense, to donate the extra length of slatted fence.
I I believe Ms. Killens, I'm sorry, I'm calling you Ms. Killens. I want to make sure I get the name right. I believe Ms. Killens and Mr. Dow would be in the best position to answer that question. They know what was taken down, and they know what their agreement is better than I do.
Yes, sir.
The answer is yes. Mrs. Killen has made it very apparent that she wants it to be homogeneous across that line. In addition, there were some concerns about the parking and people going over the the property into Mrs. Smith's. She's also agreed to put parking blocks along the entire side, as I stated before, to protect both the hedges, the fence, and the property to the north.
All right, while you're there, let me ask you another question, if I can. I'm looking at the the slide on the left hand side of the screen, and the yellow line goes to the right, it looks like to a a red line that says new gate blocking storage, so.
Yes, sir. Part of the complaint from the the neighbors to the north, in fact, I think the community expressed some discord with the the view inside that storage area there. So they wanted that to be concealed as well. That was part of their concern, and I think it's going to acquiesce with the neighbors' requests to the north.
So so Killens has agreed, where I see a yellow line, there's going to be the chain length fence, correct?
Yes, sir.
And would there be a shrub or some sort of green reef for the length of the yellow line, except on the far left hand side?
Which would be the the furthest point to the west, which is the neighboring property, and also in front of the gate, obviously, there wouldn't be any shrubs there as well.
Otherwise, there would be the shrubbery and the new fence that way.
Yes, sir.
Martin, I'm confused then.
It may have to stop at the ditch. I don't know what the distance is from that.
What is it we, what is it that the city's objecting to then? If Killens has already agreed to all this?
No, sir, they've not. I think that there may still be some confusion, and I don't want to step on the toes of the planning department. But if you look on the screen that's on the left, the yellow line is where staff thinks the continuous hedgerow should be. The green line is where the applicant would like to put the continuous hedgerow. You might not be able to see the green line, but it is directly south of the residence, and it's only about four or five parking spots wide.
Oh, I see, I see.
So that's where the divergence between the hedgerows is is located. So everything outside of the green, the concerns that staff has about visual nuisances could still be present.
I see, that makes sense.
Yeah, she'd have to speak.
Mrs. Killens, I'm sorry, we're going to need to have you on the microphone if you're going to speak. And what you're saying is different from what your contractor is suggesting and what the application has been submitted.
Okay.
In fact, if Mrs. Killen is in agreeance with that, then that's fine. We can put it on as much as of her property as we can, to which we can irrigate. Because that's going to be.
That makes sense, we understand.
Again, because of T C E Q laws, you you can't irrigate somebody else's yard with your water system. Yeah, that's that's the law. I won't get a permit.
Apologize if I'm confused. I'm hearing what you're saying, and I'm shaking, I'm seeing a shaking head from Mrs. Killens. So I I want to know for sure, as the property owner, what your intent is, because somebody is on your behalf of saying something different from what your body language is saying, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Deanna Killen, 4026 Ravensway Court. My plan is to have the hedgerow run the entire length of the fence, so it looks cohesive. I'm not that concerned about the irrigation because of the box row hedges, they're very tough. The whole perimeter of my property is box row hedges, and they are tough. They can, they don't need to be irrigated. I have irrigation all over the the restaurant, and it's there for the trees. So I'm not that worried, but I want it to look good. And I like just putting a section of hedgerow right there, that's crazy. I mean, it's going to look terrible. So I want to, I do want to put the hedgerow the whole length of the fence.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, ma'am. I'm sorry to have you do that from there, but because
I didn't want to complicate the matter.
And what you were saying were two different things. I was concerned and confused.
Yeah, I'm not as concerned about the irrigation as Darnell is, but it's, trust me, I'm not going to spend the money and then watch them die.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Questions?
I have some questions. Oh, go ahead, you go first. All right. It's very important that we take our time and that we're thorough here today, and that we consider all of the evidence and all of the statutes and our, what we're allowed to do as a board. We want to make sure that we're, we listen to everybody and that everybody is heard, and that we look at the, our guidelines as carefully as possible. The first question I have is, is there any question as to the location of the property line between the Killens property and Ms. Smith's property? And that question's to the board, I mean, to the, to staff.
If you could repeat that, I'd.
Is there any ambiguity or question as to where the property line is between Ms. Smith's property and Killens property? So that we know whether the fence is going to be on Killens property or Ms. Smith's property?
So typically, fences are on a shared property line. So that way, you don't create an issue of maintenance in between a fence being six inches offset from one another. And then you have a an area where weeds and other nuisances are available to populate.
And then my, I suppose.
From my understanding, it is on the shared property line, but I have not confirmed that with a survey.
And it appears that Ms. Smith was saying something about the property line, not that the fence is not on the property line?
Now, if you're going to and first of all, let's wait till we finish with this statement here first, please.
Ms. Ms. Smith, to your knowledge, is the fence on the property line? Or is it on your property or on Killens property? If you know.
Well, I have surveys from the past, and I have a fence that's been there for 40 years, and it's still existing. So that is my fence, and it is, it's been, you know, surveyed through the years. And then there's like a foot gap in between that and where their fence was originally placed back when it was the other restaurant. I'm assuming their survey shows that theirs is in the proper place. That's their business. And I just weed kill in between there, because you're right, there's no access to get in there other than to weed kill.
All right, I have some more follow up questions. All right, so you've had a survey of the property line during the past five years?
It's probably been closer to 10 that we've had one since its original.
And there were, before the concrete wall was taken down, there were two walls, the concrete wall on Killens property and the wood fence wall on your property.
I have cyclone.
What what is that?
The cyclone, just just a clear cyclone. And I left it and chose not to take it down, even though that that fence was much more attractive, because it is on my property line, and I want the distinction of being able to say my property is fenced.
When you say you had cyclone, are you, do you mean you had wood posts?
No, it's actually a cyclone fence like that.
Is this a picture of your property?
Yes.
A chain link fence?
Chain link, okay, all right. You had a chain link fence, and there was some space, and then the concrete wall fence that Killens had.
Correct, and I still have my fence up. I've refused to take it down because I have dogs. And when there was a problem, they wouldn't ever fix the fence. So there was gaps of 10 feet open at a time for months.
Now, when you say they wouldn't fix the fence, has a vehicle ever crashed into the concrete wall between your property and Killens? To your knowledge?
I really don't know, other than the fact that that fence has fallen down multiple times. You're saying that it's the reason is the erosion causing, because there's slats, and as the posts do this, the slats come loose. I honestly think it's a combination. I think that people do possibly hit it.
All right, during the presentation by Mr. Dow, he mentioned parking space stops. Had that been dis- Had that been discussed with you and the people?
The lawyer has mentioned it, but I am not educated on what that is enough to know what it is. That's why, to me, the shrubbery, I mean, I've had people come in my front yard, jump a ditch, and hit a row of lugustums, and stop. So in our minds, we're accepting it based on the fact that there's that little added, not only opaqueness, or the lighting coming into our bedroom and our patios and my hot tub, it's also providing a little bit more of a barrier in case somebody was to jump the curb.
Well, I'm going to get to that fence options in a moment, but my question right now is about the parking stops. So is it your...
I don't know anything about it, other than it had been mentioned, but I don't know how they work, what they do, where they're going to be located.
So it's your understanding that there are currently no parking space stops?
No.
That was a bad question for me. Are there currently parking space stops between your property and the car, and Killens?
No.
Okay. But recently, during the past year, representatives of Killens have suggested to you that they would put parking lot stops, correct?
Within the last two or three months, I heard that in the proposal for this fence, that that would be done.
Now, was the concrete wall fence taken down by the folks from Killens?
It was, because I had called, because one morning, like, a 10-foot section fell down, and I heard it, and I went out there and saw that it was down, and I brought it to their attention. Privacy, safety for my grandchildren, children, the slats were heavy, and when they fall, like, I heard them inside my home. And so I looked at the rest of the fence, knowing that that could happen at any time. So I was very concerned.
Now, the part of the fence that...
They did take it down.
The part of the fence that had fallen down that morning, was it next to the parking lot, the Killens' parking lot?
No, it was right outside my bedroom window, within 10 feet to the front yard.
But on the other side of that fence was the Killens' parking lot?
Correct.
Okay. Other than that one day, where you woke up and heard the crash that the fence had fallen down, had you ever made any complaints as to the structure of the concrete wall before then?
Yes. The previous year, 10, 15, well, probably 15-foot section fell down at the very end in that left-hand corner, and nobody did anything, nobody cared.
And that other...
It just was, I had homeless people parked in the parking spot.
And that other time that you had complained when that section fell down, was that section also, the other side of that section was also the parking lot at Killens', correct?
Yes, ma'am. And I've had the fence down for two and a half years.
Ma'am, and those two times that you heard crashing noises and a section of the fence fall down, was that at night, during the daytime or in the morning?
Daytime.
All right. Now, is there a concrete fence up now?
There's nothing. Almost two and a half years, we've had our privacy invaded. I mean, they got a lawyer. I want to get a lawyer to get somebody to put a fence up.
Has Killens put any type of shrubbery in this...
There's been no attempt for, to feel about my privacy for two and a half years, except for the fact that she hired a lawyer and she wants it done. I want it done now, too.
Is there any shrubbery, has any shrubbery been placed in this area where the proposed wall is right now?
No, ma'am, there's nothing.
I saw some posts, some wood posts, in one of the photographs. Are those wood posts there now?
They left the concrete posts that were original. I'm assuming they won't be using those. They probably left them because they may be using the holes.
All right.
That was my only logic on an engineering perspective. I don't know.
All right. So all of the posts from that concrete wall are still there, correct?
Yes.
All right. That's all the questions I have for you, ma'am. I have some questions for staff. Is the proposed wall, or fetch chain link fence, the fence itself, is it 100% opaque?
I cannot say that the fence material is 100% opaque, and that is based on the visual that we have from the suggested fence that is located at the BTD-4 facility that was provided by the applicant as an example of the fence or of a similar type of fence, which was shown as that white building in the presentation. Additionally, the applicant said that their manufacturing team states that it's about a 98% privacy, and that was included within the report.
So Section 2.7.3.7B of Section 9 is the exception that Killens is seeking, and that what Killens is seeking requires that the proposed screening fence is 100% opaque. Have you been presented with any material that would indicate that the proposed screening fence is 100% opaque?
I would say that we have only been presented with this chain link fence that has the privacy slats, and as stated, that that is not a 100% opaque material.
And then I want to, I just want to be clear on it. If I could ask questions of Mr. Dow?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the proposed chain link fence with the slats, is the proposed fence 100% opaque?
As Martin Gregg stated, the manufacturer says it's 98% opaque, not 100.
And that's an approximate?
That is an approximate. Now, on the other hand, another approved structure is a wooden fence. A wooden fence, after three years, being in place, is not 100% opaque either. Board shrink, it is a natural product. It will not have that effect in three years. Furthermore, it's going to suffer the same deterioration and failures that this concrete fence has already sustained because of the elevation differences that I discussed the first time I was at the podium. It's going to fail equally, because you're asking a rigid structure to move with the terrain or have some sort of shift. I own a fence company. I live 1615 Garden Glen Lane. Look it up. I live right by Clear Creek. My fence is falling over. It's innate. I own the company. It's going to happen. It will happen. It will fail if it's a rigid structure. Another alternative, like I said, is the wood. The wood is not 100% opaque after the first year. You'll have gaps in it about an eighth of an inch, as minimal as this product is here. And this product will not fail under duress of the UDC code from 2000. That's, you're asking this to actually sustain and perform over an elongated period of time.
The only proposal that our board is considering tonight is a proposal that was submitted and for us now. And so my, my question is, as far as what this board is considering tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the proposed screening fence, and I'm reading, I'm following the language of Section 2.7.3.7B of Section 9, is your proposed screening fence 100% opaque?
It is not, just as the manufacturer suggested. It is 98%.
Therefore, does your proposal that you're asking us to consider tonight, does it comply with 2.7.3.7B of Section 9?
With the addition of the shrubbery, this is what we were trying to achieve, and this is precisely why I described to you a wooden fence, because the wooden fence, over time, Martin and I had this discussion exhaustively, it will fail. It will crumble under that duress because of the slope issues.
Sir, I'm not asking about the wood fence, or, and I appreciate your commentary, we certainly want to...
It is not. I've explained, it is not. The chain link fence is not, by definition, is not.
And I don't, and this is the section that the applicant is asking us to review, and we have a particular application here today with a proposed screening fence. In Section 2.7.3.7B of Section 9, it does not mention shrubs or plants at all in that particular section, does it?
It does not.
All right. Does your proposal comply, in your opinion, with Section 2.7.3.7B subsection 9, as you presented tonight?
With the shrubbery, I believe it does.
That's not my question.
My proposal is here.
Yeah, my, that's not my question, and thank you for that, but that's not my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is shrubbery mentioned anywhere?
Oh, in that section? No, ma'am, it's not. No, it's not.
And your application tonight is asking us to, to grant a special exception based on that particular section, correct?
Yes, in addition to the things that have been asked to create that 100% opacity.
But that's, as, as far as what you've presented tonight, the basis of your special, of the applicant's special exception is 2.7.3.7 subsection B9. That's the only basis of the application tonight, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Does your application comply with subsection 9 as it stands?
The application of this product specifically?
The application that you're asking our board to decide tonight?
Maybe I don't understand the question.
Yes. We're here tonight to approve or deny an application, VARZ 22-15, special exception for alternative screening fence between a commercial and residential property, and you have filed the application on behalf of the property owner, Killens, correct?
Correct.
You are the only person that is here to speak officially on behalf of the applicant, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So my question to you regarding this particular application that you're asking us to vote on tonight, does it comply with the language of subsection 9?
I think it does. My opinion. You asked my opinion.
I certainly did. Now, is it 100% opaque, the proposed screening fence without the...
It is not. Without the shrubbery, it is not. But also, in my opinion, it's the only fence that will exist in a long-term situation where you have a 16-inch grade elevation difference, excuse me.
Have there been any type of topographical studies performed along this fence line in the past six, in the past two years?
We have photos of it. We provided those showing that it is breaking under duress of the earth. It's, it's holding, it's literally holding the dirt up. That's what the job of that is.
Have there been any topographical or engineering studies of this fence line in the past three years?
No, ma'am, because at the time that it was approved under the UDC from 2000, it was approved. And standing in that parking lot to the south, that fence is five feet high, because there's 14 inches of it in the ground.
Has any professional engineer or other engineering company evaluated the area, the land area where this fence line is being proposed?
Not since its original construction, when it was Joseph's Restaurant.
Has any engineering company, professional engineer, evaluated the previous concrete wall as far as strength or structural integrity during the past three years, to your knowledge?
Past three years? I'm confident they have not.
All right. Has any other fencing company provided a bid or evaluated other potential options for fencing along this fence line?
Not that I'm aware.
Has any other, do you, does your company and you, do you do brick fences?
Of course we do.
All right.
We do brick and CMU and even cast-in-place concrete.
All right.
The larger issue here is not the fence, it's the, it's the grade.
Has, has this fence line been evaluated for a possibly use of Rhino Rock concrete fence, which is manufactured by the same company of the flat fence that you're proposing?
Rhino Rock is not, so are you talking about the plastic product, the mold-injected plastic product?
Yeah, Rhino Rock.
Yeah. I mean, it can be put in place there, but it's going to fail as would a wood fence.
Has any engineer, professional engineer, indicated that any particular fence would fail in that location?
No, I didn't see the need to have an engineer go and assess it, but I would be more than happy to.
Has any other fence company that you're aware of or anyone else looked at other vinyl simulated wood fences or other fencing option for that area, to your knowledge?
You know, I can talk exhaustively about how these things fail.
No, I just wanted to ask of any other fencing company.
The answer is no. The answer is definitively no.
That's all that I have at this time. I'm sorry, you had some questions?
I have, go ahead, I'm going to let you...
Ms. Smith, I have a question for you. You don't mind? Initially, we started with a chain link fence with plastic slats, and then we went to chain link fence, plastic slats, and some shrubbery, and now what's on the table is shrubbery 100% the length of the fence. And when you were up there speaking of, of the condition, did I hear correctly saying that with the shrubbery, you would be satisfied or find that acceptable?
To be honest, the only reason we're satisfied is because it's been two and a half years, and we want a fence up ASAP. Nobody's putting a fence up. I got a beautiful seven-year-old granddaughter. I just saw somebody being abducted the other day on TV. I want a fence up. So we're, we are settling, yes, sir, and counsel, just because we can't, we can't stand it anymore. We need a fence up, and nobody cares. Nobody.
Thank you very much.
I understand, but I would like to say, the reason that I proposed for the fence as well, in one aspect, is because there is an elevation issue. I'm not an engineer, but nobody's looked into that, nobody's talked about any other type of alternative. It's been his fence and his fence alone.
Well, I, I sort of, I apologize, but I sort of do agree with, with the statement that those other fences would fail within maybe five to 10 years.
If that's the possibility, and they, they honestly believe that, I just, we're, we're settling for the fence. We're not happy about it, but we would be willing to settle for the fence with the proper height of shrubbery.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Smith, before you sit down, I'm sorry, I should have said something quicker. From the pictures you have seen tonight of the fence with the plastic slats in them, and we had a whole bunch of them to look at, and the fact that there's going to be eventually a shrub that's, I think, six feet tall, if I remember, Martin, I think's what the proposal said, is there any reason to believe with the combination of both of those fences or barriers, that you would face some kind of light pollution, if those were operative? I mean, I know there's, there's good, and then there's perfect. I'm not sure we'll ever get to perfect, but...
In, in the manner of compromise?
I don't know what compromise means, but I just, I'm just asking, you're a homeowner and you have a family.
Mm-hmm.
Is your home, is your family and you going to be unhappy if they put up the fence with the slats and the shrubs? Is that a...
Not if the shrubs are all the way down, and it's the continuous hedge that will grow the height. I would be willing to settle for that, yeah.
Okay. Not perfect.
I mean, I would have to settle for that.
Okay. So if you left here tonight and you had the commitment of the property owner that they would do those things, would you walk out of here a happier person or an unhappy person? that they would do those things, would you walk out of here a happier person or an unhappy person?
Settling, but I would be happy that this is over. I have a husband with cancer, he recently had a stroke. He's been through too much.
I understand, ma'am, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, Martin, so are we, is this city putting up a plastic, or the chain link with the plastic inserts, I forgot what it's called, and putting the shrubbery there, knowing that no one on the earth can guarantee it's 100% opaque? Does that meet the spirit of the code or the requirement of the UDC on fencing? The combination of that and the shrubbery? Or are we going to have to hold out to 100% plus 0.1% to meet the spirit of the code?
I understand where the question's going. I think that the Unified Development Code and the adoption of this, of the additional criteria within the special exception was to allow a case-by-case review of alternatives for fencing in between non-residential uses and residential uses. With that said, originally, there was a masonry fence there that provided for 100% opacity. What is being proposed for adoption does not meet 100%. It meets 100% with additional vegetative screening, but the fence itself is not 100%. While we have heard discussion about alternative materials, we also have not heard discussion of alternative designs of those materials. For instance, you can, you can alternate stacking of wood pickets to provide for 100%. And there is no, even on warping, there's still a plank behind that is not going to provide that eighth of an inch as described. So to answer your question, I believe that the intent of the ordinance or of the, of the criteria was to allow this to be reviewed by the zoning board of adjustment and for y'all to be able to examine all of the criteria specific to the location.
Thanks a lot, Martin. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions and comments from the board? I would say no because we passed that session of that, but I appreciate you asking instead of jumping up. Because, yeah, we've been having this whole discussion already. So I think we're, we're ready to, I respect that, but we're going to move forward in the process. Thank you, sir. We'd like to move into consideration and possible action. Would you put the, the status up for us, please? And Don, would you read the motion?
I make a motion to approve variance application 22-15 for a special exception for alternative screening fence between a commercial and a residential property with the condition that a vegetative screen planted along the entire length of the required buffer between the non-residential and residential properties as outlined by staff in their report.
It's been motion, is there a second?
Can I make an amendment? I'd like to include the wheel stops.
Pardon me, Mr. Acosta? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second first. If there was a second, then there could be an amendment.
Is there a second? It's a motion and second, any discussion?
So now, if you wanted to make the amendment, sir?
I'd like to make an amendment to add the wheel stops along, at every parking space.
It's been motion and we have the amendment to add the parking stops as well.
So to be clear, the parking stops as identified in the applicant's presentation?
They were, okay.
Any discussion?
I did not hear a second for Mr. Acosta's motion to amend.
I withdraw my motion. It was included already.
Oh, no, sir, I'm sorry, no. I'm saying the applicant's presentation or the applicant's middle included the parking stops, I believe. So that there's no confusion, that is not part of their application, that's just part of their diagram. And I'm saying the parking stops as identified with the applicant presentation.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
The amendment has been second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
So this is just on the amending the original motion? And I'm sorry, I didn't count off. Got it, that was a 5-0 if I counted correctly.
All, yes, 5-0. All denying, no, it's 5-0. Now we'd like to make a motion on the entire-
So now what's on the floor?
Is the entire approval for VARZ 22-15. Any discussion?
So it's VAR 22-15 with staff recommendations and with the parking stops as identified in the applicant's middle.
Correct.
And that includes the vegetation, too, so we're saying vegetation.
Yes, sir.
That was in the original-
That was included as the staff condition.
Original motion, correct. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries, 5 to 0. And we're going to move into our next session that we have for the zoning board of adjustments.
Yes, sir, I believe the next item was originally posted tables to the end of the meeting and that would be the election of the officers.
Yes.
Okay.
Shelby, what do we, Gary had, what are you going to do, Gary?
So-
Oh, yeah, we'd like to go ahead and open the session for elections. Any nominations that we particularly have?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion with your permission and the permission of all of the board members here in the interest of economy of time and allowing me to introduce a slate of three candidates to fill the positions that are currently open as officers. But I must have your permission and the board's permission to do that.
We have my permission.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to present the slate of nominees for the position of chairman, the position of vice chairman, and the position of secretary of our board. For the position of chairman, I would nominate Mr. Mark Green. Lewis, I know a Mark Green, I keep thinking Mark Green, sorry, Mark. And vice chairman, Mr. Jerry Acosta, Mr. Acosta, and secretary, the one and only Teresa DeValle. So moved.
Spin motion.
So because it's nominations, typically you would ask if there are any other nominations before you take a vote on that?
Any other nominations?
Feel free to nominate yourself. Feel free to decline a nomination. No, sir, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying if you heard your name and you didn't want that, you are welcome to say, "I kindly appreciate the vote of confidence, but please do not consider me." Or if you thought that somebody else should be in there, you're always welcome to put their name in the hat.
I think we're, we're- So now we can simply have the vote on the floor? Because I think we're all just tired right now.
So with that, I'm not hearing any opposition or amendments or additional nominations. So I think Mr. Schrum had a motion to approve his proposed slate. Is there a second for that?
It's been motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries for the election of officers. It is 8:42 as we conclude the September 2022 zoning board of adjustments.